Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer. Second by Mr. Braswell to reopen, open, re-enter open session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones. And we will move on to item six point zero one. Mr. Twig, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a moment of silence this evening. Mr. Twig?
It is with much sadness that I ask for you to join me in a moment of silence for Spotsylvania High School senior Daniel Retkoski. He passed away on April 7th and will be greatly missed. And our thoughts are with his family at this time of sorrow.
Thank you. And moving on to seven point zero one, public hearing, we have none. Consent agenda, Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening, the minutes of the March 12th, 2018 regular meeting, the March 13th joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and the March 26th special meeting, donations which are usual and customary, approval of the 2018-2019 holiday calendar for 12-month employees, and approval of the Head Start Continuation Grant application. Staff ask that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Informational items were attached to the agenda, Head Start items, discipline report for February 2018, and items for the May 14th board meeting. Onto the instructional highlight, ten point zero one, Chancellor High School Musical Performance. Mrs. Farnard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, we have Chancellor High School Musical Performance. This month Chancellor High School will present Roger and Hammerstein's Cinderella. And each year, the Spring Musical is a collaboration between the theater and the chorus departments. Approximately 80 students are involved as actors, technicians, and musicians. The Spring Musical is an extracurricular activity that provides students with an extension of their skills that they learn in our performing arts classes. And we hope that everyone will join us for their performance on April 20th, 21st, 27th, and 28th. And this evening, our student performers are Megan Allison, Alexa Rivas, and Tyler Jacobs as narrator. And I would like to also acknowledge that the musical is directed by Matthew Armentraut, Connor Worthington, and Rhonda Miller.
This thing on? It is. Hello, I am Tyler Jacobs. I am a senior at Chancellor High School. This is my fourth year in the musical. Done a lot, so these guys. Tonight we'll be performing two songs in my own little corner, and "Impossible." A few minutes and several bibbidi-bobbidi-boos later...
Fall, the roll, and fiddle-dee-dees, fiddle-dee, faddle-dee, foodle!
Fun fact, our own Rhonda Miller made that dress and made it transform. Isn't that cool? It's super cool. We just came from rehearsal. We open in 11 days. We hope you, we will all see you at Chancellor High School's production of Robert Rogers and Hammerstein's Cinderella, opening April 20th. Woo-hoo!
Well, that was fantastic way to start the evening. And on to ten point zero two, the Future Farmers of America presentation, Mrs. Farnard.
Thank you. Members from the Future Farmers of America, Career and Technical Student Organization of Chancellor High School, and their sponsors are here this evening to discuss the importance of their industry and the impact it has on our own local economy.
Hello, my name's Lauren Fletcher. I'm a junior at Chancellor High School. I'm also the reporter of our school's chapter, and I have been in FFA for three years.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Servant. I'm the student advisor of Chancellor FFA, and I've been in FFA for the past three years, and I'm a junior at Chancellor High School.
So our motto is learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve. And this is something that our organization stands by, and our chapter tries to influence this throughout all the activities we do. So FFA is a national organization. It is a curricular, student-run organization that focuses on premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. It evolved into the National FFA Organization with over 650,000 members nationwide. And it provides students with leadership opportunities, public speaking experience, and preparation for the workplace through career development events.
At Chancellor, FFA membership has grown over 40 active members. Over 15 members are planning to compete in career development events ranging from dairy cattle evaluation to agricultural sales at the state convention in June. One of our members will be competing next week at the regional level for her six-to-eight-minute speech about fertilizer usage in agriculture. We have hosted several events to promote agriculture in the community by, I can't read, inviting, sorry, inviting the mobile dairy lab this fall, and hosting a school-wide petting zoo during FFA week.
So these are pictures of some of the activities we have done throughout the school year so far. So the top left was during FFA week, we got together with the other chapters and the state officers and played some games to celebrate. Then beside that is our bake sale, and then we have trash cleanup we did at the school where we went around Harrison Road and picked up trash to help the environment. And then the dairy lab where we brought a dairy cow to the school to show the students about the industry. And then the bottom left is a picture of us at State, at Virginia Tech. And then beside that is a picture at the petting zoo of one of our school officers kissing the calf. And then the last picture is our first meeting of the school year.
Recently, in March 28th, we went to Walmart, and a couple of our officers were able to go, including us three and one more. And we went there to buy some dairy products since right now, due to the decline of farmers not being paid enough, so we wanted to help out by buying enough dairy products, cheese, milk, and all that, and donating all that food to the food bank, to our local food bank, the regional food bank. And it was a really good experience. It really helped us out, know exactly what's going on behind where we get our products, also helping out people who really need food. And... And here are the photos of the process where we went to Walmart. As you can see, the top two pictures show off the different products that we donated. And the others is pictures of us going to the food bank and going to, we donated about how many pounds? 300 pounds of food to the food bank, so.
This milk that you see right here is actually a very local, how do you word it? How do you word it? Like, yeah, very local milk, I guess. Actually, a lot of the milk comes from our advisor, from her cows, and she sends of her milk to this company. And so it was pretty cool to see this at Walmart and to know that our money was actually going to, you know, local dairy farmers. And here's our social media in case you want to keep up with Chancellor FFA. We're on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. We will move on to recognitions and awards. Start with eleven point zero one, Fine Arts Recognition, Mrs. Farnard.
Thank you. We are celebrating the outstanding student artwork from five of our schools. This month, we are showing artwork from Harrison Road Elementary School, art teacher Erin Watson; Lee Hill Elementary, art teacher Cynthia Daniels; Riverview Elementary, art teacher Anne Flues; Smith Station Art Teacher, Chelsea Rogers; and Freedom Middle School Art Teacher, Andrew Beckers. These students were recognized and received certifications, certificates of appreciation at a reception held in their honor prior to the meeting beginning this evening.
And we'll move on to eleven point zero two, the Superintendent's Art Award. Mrs. Farnard?
Thank you. We are celebrating an amazing fifth grader this evening. The April Superintendent's Award winner for outstanding visual art goes to Kayden Bernard. He's a fifth grade student at Smith Station Elementary School. His... His artwork will hang in Dr. Baker's office this month. And we would like Kayden, as well as his art teacher, Chelsea Rogers, to come forward to be recognized for their outstanding accomplishment. And Chelsea just had to leave. And Kayden, I have to say, you have an amazing T-shirt on this evening. I couldn't resist, Dr. Baker.
Moving on to eleven point zero three, the Regional Spelling Bee winners.
So as the Board knows, and our audience may be aware, that recently, we had our Division Spelling Bee. Well, I am here to announce that we have an update. The 13th Annual Freelance Star and Central Rappahannock Regional Library Spelling Bee was held on Saturday, March 17th at 10:00 a.m. at James Monroe High School, right here in Fredericksburg. We are proud to share that our Division participants, Samantha Ho from Thornburg Middle and Daniel Fordham from Freedom Middle, were also the final two contestants in that competition. Samantha Ho... There's Samantha. And here comes Daniel. Samantha Ho was the champion with the correct spelling of chrysanthemum. As the regional winner, Samantha will participate in the 91st Annual Scribs National Spelling Bee, which is at the Gaylord National Resort. And that's being held May 27th through June 1st. And we are so proud of Samantha and Daniel. You did a great job and an amazing representation of Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Congratulations, and I know you're going to do great at Nationals. If Samantha and Daniel's family are in the audience, could they stand to be recognized, please? Oh, the newspaper article. Excellent. Congratulations. Thank you.
I have to say something. Before, I was there at the Spelling Bee, and I had tears in my eyes when our two people, our two spellers were up on that stage as the final two. I'm getting ready to tear up about it now. But to see Daniel and Samantha up there, and then, you know, in the final four, and then the final three, and then the final two, I'm, you know, I was emotional. I can only imagine the parents and the family members and the two spellers, so congratulations. Eleven point zero four, Massaponics Theater Department.
Thank you. Massaponics High School's Theater Department team finished this season with a clean sweep at the Virginia High School League State Festival on March 3rd. If they could please come forward. In addition, two of the actors from Massaponics, and if you could raise your hand to be acknowledged, received Outstanding Performer Awards, Caroline Mork and Caitlin Woodford. Both of the girls were recognized for their performances at the sectional, regional, and state festivals. And the Massaponics directors, if they're here, if they would please come forward, Kimberly Kemp and Stephen Singer. If our families are here that helped to support our theater program at Massaponics, could you please stand to be recognized?
Eleven point zero five, 23rd Annual Teen Art Show.
For the past 20 years, the Central Rappahannock Regional Library has provided every student in our service area with a unique opportunity, the chance to exhibit their work as a professional artist. Teen artists in grades nine through 12 submit their work for a month-long display at the library headquarters. And the following students from Spotsylvania County were recognized this year. When you hear your name, if you could please come forward. Caitlin Garvey, first place, nine through 12, art teacher, LeAnn Houston. And while we have Caitlin here, we'll continue from Chancellor High School. Not with us this evening, we have Olivia Blizzard, who took third place, nine through 12, art teacher Carlos Moore. As well, from Chancellor High School, I do believe they're present, Alex Matthews, third place, grades 11 through 12, also art teacher, LeAnn Houston. From Massaponics High School, our first-place individual, I do not believe is able to be here this evening, it's Brianna Paris. She took first place, grades 11, 12, art teacher Delaina Chandler. And I do believe that Peyton Powell, second place, grade 11 through 12, is here, art teacher Carter Corbin. Maybe he was unable to be here. And if we do have family here that support our arts programs, if you could please stand to be recognized. There you go. That's right. Thank you.
And then moving on to eleven point zero six, the 2018 Teacher of the Year recognitions.
Can you move the flowers at the podium?
Good evening. Each year, Spotsylvania County Public Schools participates in the Teacher of the Year Program coordinated statewide through the Virginia Department of Education. All public and accredited non-public schools are able to participate in the Virginia Teacher of the Year Program to honor teachers who represent the best in teaching in Spotsylvania County Public Schools, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and across the nation. For more than 40 years, Virginia has participated in the National Teacher of the Year Program, a project of the Council of Chief State School Officers. The program is open to all teachers in pre-kindergarten through grade 12 who possess a current renewable Virginia teaching license, including school librarians, school counselors, and reading specialists. The Office of Human Resources coordinates this process each year with our site principals. And from this group of nominees, the 2018 Division Teacher of the Year will be selected. This evening, we will recognize each of the nominees from our schools. When I call your name, we will ask that you come forward to be recognized, and you'll stand for the entire time that you're here. Representing Battlefield Elementary, Ivy Krailing, kindergarten teacher. Ivy says, "The best job in the world. I have the best job in the world. I teach children at the point in their lives where they have an amazing capacity to learn. Watching the process these children make through the course of a single school year is truly a wondrous thing." Our next Teacher of the Year could not be with us on this evening, but certainly we would like to recognize Michelle Sanders, English teacher and theater arts teacher at Battlefield Middle School. Michelle shared, "My passion for teaching was developed by working with this age group and helping them navigate through such formative years. Seeing empathy evolve in a sixth grader gives me hope that they will one day approach every conflict with an open mind and a willingness to dialogue rather than arguments that fall on deaf ears." Again, we'd like to congratulate Michelle Sanders. Fourth grade teacher from Berkeley Elementary, Glenda Maitland. Principal Robin Monroe wrote of Glenda, "The area that impresses me most is her ongoing drive to adapt to students' needs. She is a seasoned professional who has the respect and admiration of students, colleagues, parents, and administration." Brock Road Elementary Teacher of the Year, Megan Dempsey. She teaches second grade. Principal Shonda Collins Ritchie said, "Through her encouragement and leadership, our second grade students are learning all content through an interdisciplinary approach, with science and history serving as a catalyst for all other learning. Those students are experiencing a level of engagement and connected learning that is unprecedented for them." Teacher of the Year from Cedar Forest Elementary, Mary Galindo Sanchez, third grade teacher. In her essay, Mary stated, "I believe a student's success is contingent on how well I can foster our relationship to become one of safety and trust. Therefore, I need to provide a space where students learn to trust me, trust their classmates, and most of all, trust themselves." Again, we congratulate Ms. Sanchez. Representing Chancellor Elementary School, Julia Jane McNulty-Lambert, kindergarten teacher. According to Julia Jane, "All children enter the classroom with their own unique stories. Students inevitably reveal their needs to us if we are truly present to them every day. An outstanding teacher takes responsibility for educating children to be resilient while cultivating an environment that supports authentic learning through critical thinking." Again, congratulations. Representing Chancellor Middle School, Tammy Byron, library media specialist. Tammy writes, "I'm about cultivating curious, thoughtful learners who ask not only why, but why not? I'm about making mistakes, owning them, and trying again since that is where real learning takes place. I'm about letting kids know that success is personal and achievable with grit and determination, and that it is worth it, and so are they." Representing Chancellor High School, Rhonda Miller, vocal music teacher. Rhonda explains, "Practice builds skills which bring opportunity and success. Music literacy gives students the opportunity to participate in music. I teach music not so students can win auditions, not so students can perform in famous venues, but so students can enjoy, share, and appreciate music throughout their entire lives." Teacher of the Year from Courthouse Road Elementary, Allison Eltringham. Mrs. Eltringham is a gifted teacher, and she believes that communication, collaboration, and the use of technology are part of almost every assignment. In order to adequately prepare students for their future, it is imperative I help them advance their skills in these areas. Fourth grade teacher from Cortland Elementary, Megan Laskowski. Fourth-grade teacher from Cortland Elementary, Megan Laskowski. According to Megan, "Every child has a story to tell and deserves a loving and caring ear to listen. At the start of every school year, I make it my goal to connect with each student in my class on a personal level. I have found that when I form relationships with my students, they always put forth their best efforts." Representing Cortland High School, La Portia Prudencio, Spanish teacher. La Portia writes, "My students are 90% immersed in the Spanish language during class. Advanced language proficiency levels are the goal. However, mistakes are seen as learning opportunities. I want my students to strive for success during each activity, but to also be able to function in the language when they stumble." Teacher of the Year representing Freedom Middle School, Stephanie Grant. She is a special education math teacher. Stephanie believes, "The door is open for learning opportunities when students are equipped with strategies that incorporate their learning styles and the educational process. A one-size-fits-all instructional delivery model simply does not work anymore to meet each student at his academic threshold." Gloria Yee, first-grade teacher at Harrison Road Elementary. Christine Primo, her principal, says Gloria takes the time to develop strong relationships with her students and their families. She supports a class of diverse learners with varying disabilities and many challenges. She is sensitive and responsive to the diversity of individuals and always maintains high standards. Representing John J. Wright Educational and Cultural Center, Laura Jelks, early childhood special education teacher. Laura says, "My interest in teaching started in high school when I volunteered at a camp for children with orthopedic impairments. That summer taught me a lot about myself and who I wanted to become. I understood that it was not my job to fix their disabilities, it was my job to figure out needed support and put them into practice so that each piece of their development progressed." Representing Lee Hill Elementary School, Michelle Bryant. She is an ESOL teacher. Michelle wrote, "My teaching and learning philosophy revolves around serving, knowing every student's stats and story, and is shaped by my realization that my classroom is not confined to the four walls of the physical room in which I teach, but rather it is the children with whom I interact, the network of teachers and kids in my whole school, and the families and experiences in the entire county and community of Spotsylvania." School counselor from Livingston Elementary, Julie Broadway. Principal Cindy Franzen says, "Julie is a collaborative educator with a warm and caring approach to children. She is honest, trustworthy, approachable, compassionate, calm, and knowledgeable." Again, congratulations, Julie. Not here with us on this evening, representing Massaponix High School, Cassandra Smith, special education English teacher. Dr. Pozzani says that what makes Cassandra special is the energy and the level at which she works with and for her students. She is a powerful, positive force, and students have no choice but to be swept up by their enthusiasm and excitement for their success. Again, congratulations to Cassandra. Teacher of the Year from Ny River Middle School, Melissa Huffman. She is a special education teacher. Melissa wrote, "I love teaching, but most importantly, I love teaching middle school students. Middle school students are at a unique age that can one day be thrilling and the next make you want to cry. They are at the tipping point of their educational career where we, as middle school teachers, can truly make a lasting impact on a child's future." Representing Parkside Elementary, kindergarten teacher Michelle King. Michelle believes, "Students should be able to look back and remember their time in school as a time when they learned and prospered. A teacher's oath to students should be to provide a safe and supportive environment in which to learn and to have children leave our care better for having experienced our tutelage." Representing Post Oak Middle School, Elizabeth Urio, middle school science teacher. Despite the many changes in education over the years, Beth states, "Certain faucets have remained constant. All children are curious and want to be successful. Hands-on experiences will be remembered far beyond the written word, and small group experiences are platforms for individual creativity and self-expression." Teacher of the Year from Riverbend High School, English teacher Emily Wessel. Emily wants literature to leave an impression. "I want the words to mean something. It is my job to leave them there. It isn't the who or the what that matters, but the why and how. These two small words ignite discussion and emotional responses. These two small questions encourage students to grow." Library media specialist representing Riverview Elementary, Ms. Diane Smart. Diane says that being a librarian affords me the opportunity to trailblaze in a way that the classroom never really could. "There is an entire staff with whom to collaborate on a day-to-day basis. The sky really is the limit. If it can be imagined, our space is the place to try it." Teacher of the Year for Robert E. Lee Elementary, Jeanette Burge. She teaches first grade. Jeanette is not here on this evening, but according to Jeanette, "Students need to be producers, not just consumers, of digital content. I designed and piloted a writing program using technology to support each step of the writing process, including templates, videos for specific teaching points, and feedback video conferencing. This process has resulted in incredible growth in my students' writing abilities and technology literacy." Again, we'd like to congratulate Ms. Burge. School counselor at Salem Elementary, Allison Newland. Allison shares, "While I am not a teacher in the traditional sense, I believe it is true that everyone who interacts in the lives of children is a teacher, whether it be parents, grandparents, older siblings, cafeteria workers, principals, social workers, or bus drivers. We all have the opportunity to develop young minds. What an amazing, overwhelming responsibility this is." Teacher of the Year from Smith Station Elementary, Whitney Bush, first grade. Bush, I'm so sorry. I really wanted to call you your other name. Whitney wrote, "There are many different specialties and strengths required for a teacher. However, I also believe one of the most important traits is their use of heart. While dreams of using a pointer and workbooks ignite my desire to teach, my hope to positively impact futures academically and socially is what drives me today." Representing Spotswood Elementary, Marvin Servaska. And it's Servastava. Sorry, Marvin. Marvin says, "One of her rewards is the opportunity to build strong relationships with families. I trust in the influence of parental involvement as a fundamental key for academic success. My teaching role goes beyond the school boundaries. I make sure students attend school every day. I participate in all of their students' parent conferences. I train parents to learn reading strategies in their native language so they are able to help students at home." Again, thank you, Marvin, for your work as an ESOL teacher for us. Representing the Spotsylvania Career and Technical Center, Randall Whitehead, drafting and CAD instructor. Randall explains, "What he has to offer his students, workplace readiness skills, how to build a team member, show up for work on time, put in an honest effort, accept responsibilities for actions, good or bad. Students must still learn the drafting rules and regulations, but these workplace readiness skills apply to all occupations." Teacher of the Year representing Spotsylvania High School, math teacher Sharon Kipple. Sharon loves the anticipation of a new group of students and the challenges that come with them every year. I start my classes off with a get-to-know-me icebreaker that asks students not only about their feelings towards math, but also their hobbies and extracurricular activities. I make it a point to learn something special about each one. Representing Spotsylvania Middle School, math teacher Mike Holberg. Principal Lane Byrd writes, "Mike's positivity, caring attitude, and overall expertise have been instrumental in creating an integrated approach to learning math that pulls together the best for each individual teacher in their planned lessons. Indeed, Mike is truly about not only his own professional growth, but making other teachers around him better as well." Our next Teacher of the Year is not able to be with us today, representing Thornburg Middle School, Jordan Patterson, who is the band instructor. Principal Darrell Land says, "He exhibits great concern for each of his students despite teaching over a quarter of the school population each week. He continues to remain dedicated to excellence, both from himself and his students, by his strong desire to have students dream big and work hard." Let's congratulate Mr. Patterson. And last, but certainly not least, in our recognition, Lizzie Barnes, library media specialist representing Wilderness Elementary. Lizzie says, "The reward of teaching happens in the small things that occur on a daily basis. When a child says hello in the hallway, asks my opinion, or giggles at my jokes, I know that we are connected. That connection is what drives me to start each new day ready to inspire." What a... Couldn't ask for a better way to close out, celebrating such an amazing, incredible group of professionals here before us. So, thank you all, and may we congratulate them once again.
Okay, so you want to stand on that end? Dr. Breakthrough?
Yeah, you got it wrong.
You walked down there, Dr. [inaudible]. All right, if you're tall, please step back and let a shorter person stand in front of you. I'm short, it's okay.
Oh, my gosh, I can't even watch.
All right, scoot in.
I don't know what to do.
All right, so you two are not in. Scoot in. Still can't get everybody in.
Okay, do you want to mute it?
No, I can't watch this. I gotta back up, that's all. All right.
All right, I got you.
All right, I just need a little bit more. There we go. Everybody's in now. Put this way. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. And that brings us to item 12.01, public comments. Dr. Martin?
Good evening. The public comment segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time for the board should once five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain the level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Jeanne Bergeron.
My name is Jeanne Bergeron. I reside in the Battlefield District, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Spotsylvania Education Association. Recently, there's been a great deal of discussion concerning school safety and bullying prevention. It is these topics that I bring before you tonight. First, let me be crystal clear. We, the Spotsylvania Education Association, want safe schools for all the children of our county. We look forward to continuing the discussion on school safety as we navigate into fiscal year 19. Now, I'll move to the anti-bullying movement. Did you know that the Education Association has been on the forefront of the anti-bullying movement? It was thanks to the strenuous efforts of the Virginia Education Association that House Bill 1871 was enacted during the 2013 Virginia General Assembly. VEA worked directly with Senator McCollin to move that bill from committee and into law. This law is now part of your student code of conduct and school board policy JFCG. This law focuses on bullying from the student's lens. Recognizing the need for additional legislation, VEA worked with Delegate Torren to move forward a law on workplace bullying and the need for a healthy school workplace. House Bill 1044 was signed into law this year and will go into effect July 1, 2018. This law requires school divisions to adopt policies to prohibit abusive work environments, and we look forward to further discussions of the implementation of this new law. As an association, SCA believes that it is imperative to have a healthy dialogue between schools, educators, parents, and other stakeholders. We can impact change together. Tonight, as the first step in joining forces to combat bullying, I ask that each member of the school board personally commit and take the NEA Bully Free, It Starts With Me pledge. I ask that you, as a board, adopt this SCA Bully Free, It Starts With Me resolution as presented to you tonight. As parent and educator, I share the concerns that have been brought by so many of our parents and community members. Your children are your number-one priority, and as such, I invite all stakeholders to participate in a bullying prevention summit to be held this summer. SCA recognizes that bullying prevention is a complex issue. As such, our summit will be open to this board, employees, and parents. We will reach out to you and to our to you and to our community so that we can work together, so that we can work together to design the content of the bullying prevention summit. Again, I look forward to working with each one of you on combating this complex issue. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all the speakers that signed up, and I think Ms. Williams may return, but if you want to open it up to any other speakers, please do so at this time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board?
I would.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Dameron, and this is Diane Maslock. We are both school bus drivers for this county. We would like to take this chance to ask the board to consider a wage hike for us. We have not had a wage hike over nine years. We are the first and last smiling faces that the children of this county see, both regular ed and special needs. We are the first ones out on the roads before teachers and principals. We risk our lives in bad weather to ensure the students' safeties. Again, we would like to ask you to take in consideration a personal pay raise for school bus driver employees. Thank you.
And I've been with the county for 31 years. I know I don't look old enough, but I have been with it 31 years. I'm also a personal attendant for a young man who has Down Syndrome. I make a few dollars more than people coming out of class. I'm no better than anybody else, but I've been here longer. I've showed my loyalty. I don't take off unless I'm sick. Even when my mother was passing, I still came to work until the very end. And I just want you to know that we are the ones out there. When the flu was so bad and we had drivers out, I know, I was doubling runs. I was putting in overtime. Our kids got to school, and they got there safely. And all I'm asking is to be fair. I've been here 31 years, as of the 1st of April, and I just want what's due me. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the audience that did not sign up that wishes to speak? Is there anybody in the audience that did sign up that's back wishing to speak? Okay, move on to Special Reports, 13.01, Board Committee Reports. We had a meeting of the Local Finance Board to discuss OPED benefits, and there, our account is moving on as scheduled. And our next meeting will be in two months. Any other Board Committee reports? On to item 14.01, V S B A Honorable Resolutions. Renee Daniels.
Good evening. I'm here to ask you tonight for support for the Virginia School Board Association. They annually recognize businesses that support school divisions through their Business Honor Roll program. Later this year, V S B A will publish the Business Honor Roll in the Association's newsletter, and V S B A provides personalized recognition certificates and letters of congratulations. We plan to recognize these business partners at the upcoming Business Appreciation Breakfast in May. This evening, staff asked that you pass a resolution for McDonald's Wellborn Management, Forsters Financial, and Walden University for their significant contributions to our school division. For the past several years, these partners in education have provided support in many ways and continue to support our students and staff. So it is this time that administration's recommendation that the school board adopt the resolutions for McDonald's Wellborn Management, Forsters Financial, and Walden University as recommended.
I would like to make a motion for McDonald's Wellborn Management, Forsters Financial, and Walden University to be our honor roll nominees.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve the recommended action.
I will second that.
Second. Mr. Blaine, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Daniels. Move on to 14.02, Approval of the 1819 Special Education Annual Plan. Ms. Richardson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. On a yearly basis, the Office of Student Support Services completes a grant application to secure Title 6B funding for Sections 611 and 619. So that's school-age services for students with disabilities and preschool funding. At this time, it is the recommendation that the school board approves the annual plan application as it was presented on March 12, 2018.
Motion accept.
Motion by Mr. Twig to approve the recommended action. Second by Mr. Braswell, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
And we will move on to 14.03, Approval of the 1819 Local Plan for Career and Tech. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. And they're missing the best part, so they're all heading out now. So, at the March 12 school board meeting, I presented to you our Local Plan for Career and Technical Education. The Virginia Department of Education requires this plan be developed annually and submitted to the board. The plan describes program offerings and services provided to students and budgetary requirements of the program. It is the administration's recommendation that the school board approves the 1819 Local Plan for Career and Technical Education as presented.
Madam Chairman, I will so move the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blaine to approve the Local Plan for Career and Technical Education, a second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Would just like to make a comment, Mr. Wolf. Folks have done a terrific job, and that's an area where our whole curriculum is going to be increasing substantially, and so my compliments to you and your committee.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
That brings us to item 14.04, Appointment of the Citizen Member of the Local Finance. Mrs. Gaines.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Spotsylvania County Schools Local Finance Board was created over six years ago. According to the Virginia Code, this board must have a citizen rep. By practice, a citizen rep is recommended by school board members of the local finance board. Based on information received, we're recommending that Mr. Kingman be the citizen rep.
So move, Madam Chair. I've worked with Mr. Kingman, and it is a privilege to, motion to accept this recommendation, at the same time to extend to Jackie Williams' appreciation for the two years of service that she extended to the local board.
I will second.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve the nominee to the local finance board, a second by Ms. Shelley.
Discussion.
Mr. Twig.
Thank you. What information was evaluated? How long did it take, and who did it?
Okay, so when you look at the board, Mr. Twig, that was created over six years ago, the practice has been the two members who are on the local finance board, they will receive the individual's information, and they will make a recommendation. That recommendation would then come to me as the CFO, and then I would bring it to the school board for your approval.
When did this information get to the school board for distribution? I got it on Saturday. When did you deliver it to the school board?
I want to say whenever it was posted with your normal agenda. Was that Thursday? Thursday.
Okay. That said, I say again that we have to review in order to approve this type of event or affair. We cannot simply rubber stamp this, all of this stuff, as a board. We have to be more responsible to all of our citizens. We do a very bad job, as a board, in my opinion, for things like meeting agendas coming out three or four days before the meetings, contracts, budgets, books, house bills. You know, my name's attached to all this stuff, and I only have a chance of two days, if that, sometimes, to review this stuff. I recommend we table this motion so we have a month to review this application. And further, as another point of discussion, think that we should get opportunities for better selection, so we should have three, and it should include essay why they want to be on the committee, and a resume or reference point. So I make that motion to table it next month.
A second.
Point of order.
Mr. Braswell.
I believe the discussion, when we were approving the agenda, the opportunity to table the motion was at that time. And that's, so to put a motion up to table is not a proper motion.
It would be a motion for reconsideration, and neither the motion or the second voted yes in the first one, so it is not a legal motion. That is correct. Any further discussion?
Call for the question, Madam Chair.
All those in favor of approving Mr. Joe Kingman to the Local Finance Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you, Mrs. Gaines. 14.05, First Reading Approval of Revision to Policy DK Payment of Invoices. Mrs. Gaines.
Thank you. This is basically just a technical revision to the first paragraph of Policy DK. When specifically looking at that paragraph, I am the deputy as the CFO, and then the deputy director, the director of finance, Mr. Treier. So this is just a technical adjustment. Also, staff will be open to if the board wanted to consider waiving the second reading, because it's just a technical adjustment.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to accept this recommendation for the adjustment to Policy DK, where it specifies the designee in the absence of the chief finance officer, and request waiving second reading.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve the recommended action and waive the second reading. Second by Mr. Braswell, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
On to 14.06, First Reading Approval of Revision to Policy JC, School Attendance Areas and Revisions to Regulation JCR, Student Transfer Regulations for Considering Approval Request. Mr. Uppico.
Madam Chairman, Dr. Baker, members of the board, Dr. Martin. Revisions to School Board Policy JC, School Attendance Areas, and School Board Regulation JC-R, Student Transfer Regulations for Considering Approval Requests have been made and are presented to the board's consideration, discussion, and first reading approval this evening. Specifically, Policy JC revisions, and you may not have had a chance to look at them very carefully, but they do include general considerations for adjusting attendance zones, enrollment projections, the process for making redistricting decisions, school board action, attendance zone criteria, and last year options for students affected by redistricting. The Regulation JCR includes acceptable reasons for student and parent transfer request parameters, transfer request process, timetable, administrative transfers, and appeal. Having said that, it is staff's recommendation that the school board approve for first reading the proposed revisions for School Board Policy JC, School Attendance Areas, and School Board Regulation JCR, which Student Transfer Regulations for Considering Approval Requests as presented.
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve first reading student of Regulation JCR, Student Transfer Regulations, and I recommend that we approve that.
And Policy JC.
JC.
And it's JC and JC-R, there's two components.
Yes, sir. One is a Policy JC, and the other a Regulation JC-R, and are sort of embedded with each other, which is why we're presenting them at the same time.
Gotcha. And I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Braswell to approve the first reading of Policy JC and the Regulation JC-R, second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? Mr. Braswell.
Mr. Uppico, I want to thank you. I asked specifically several months ago that this policy be pulled for reconsideration, as we considered a variety of different options in terms of redistricting, looking at the Mosby Study, and a variety of other initiatives that we are looking at for possibly specialty schools. I think, as I reviewed the policy, it gives the school division the flexibility to make adjustments and use, or to be able to leverage itself as a tool in these type of endeavors to make our life a little bit easier, and the citizens' lives a lot easier, so that the transfer requirements weren't overly burdensome or stringent. So it gives us a lot of flexibility, and I approve of
Any, Ms. Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Uppico. I have a question. So, the section where it says, how does the stakeholders get selected to be?
Some of that information, as far as who would be a part of that process, would come from the principals of the schools that would be affected. Some would come from you as school board members, is my understanding. And Dr. Baker, you may want to weigh in on that as well.
And in addressing that question from Ms. Phelps, but also just generally, I appreciate the board's consideration of first reading approval, but I think it is important to note that this is a policy and a regulation that in advance, and I heard something about rubber stamping earlier, in this case, we are asking for the board's diligent review over the next month, and if we are, or you are, not ready by May, then we will continue. But this is a policy that not only needed to be addressed, but we wanted to provide, within the broader policy of attendance areas, more of a defined process for how to navigate what we may find ourselves navigating each year, especially if growth continues to occur. So, when Ms. Phelps is asking about who would be selected on that broad committee, I think that committee structure is one that I think we would certainly welcome feedback for how to form it, because what experience I do have is that many folks would not want to participate on such a committee because of the, you know, the negativity and the angst that is often tied to that, the outcomes of that process. So, certainly, I think we would look to building leaders of those affected, but also having board members engaging their communities for folks that would be good to sit on it, and that would be open to doing it. And I think there's two potential committees. One is a committee that would be a standard committee, that's part of the policy that would meet each year, even if there is no particularly redistricting to be done. But I think there's also the possibility of there could be another process within a process. It could either be led by a third party, or we could facilitate it internally, and there could be another committee of just those folks that are representing those that are affected by a particular redistricting process. So, it is complex, but we would certainly welcome feedback as we get closer to next month's meeting. As you go through the entire red line version, if there are recommendations or questions, do not hesitate to either contact myself or Mr. Uppico over the next month.
So, I have another question. Is this-
And is this the strategic blueprint towards redistricting in the future?
It's a policy to help support, better support, the inevitable process of redistricting of some kind. And what our previous policy is, you'll note, had was really just that the board would rezone, and that the board would do that at the recommendation of the superintendent. And we are trying to, not only for ourselves and this board, but for future boards and future superintendents, have more of a defined process and considerations for moving through that. I think Mr. Braswell alluded to some flexibility, but I think to better define, here's a process that we're going to engage in that is laid out in policy. So it is strategic in that we're going to be in a better position to move forward with our strategic plan, particularly in equity across all of our schools and maintaining, you know, those facilities. I think it will certainly help in terms of advancing our strategic plan.
Mr. Blaine.
As I read through all of that material today, it's a lot to read. But I see it opens another dimension as well, and school choice is one of the things that we want to make available. And that opens the door and gives us an opportunity to give our kids overall a much better opportunities as opportunities arise, as we begin to develop different kinds of schools, like the Ivy School, for example. And that always is going to involve attendance boundaries and so on. And I think that, I was excited the fact that that came up, and so I wanted to compliment you folks for what you've already done. And I see it as a real opportunity for, and a compliment to our whole division for forward-looking planning.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Uppaco and Dr. Baker. Thanks for bringing this forward, because I think it puts down on paper a process that we did not have, somewhat of a process that I was involved in when I was in his position. But as you had asked me, was there a policy? No, there wasn't. It was purely, you know, take it as you walk through it. This puts down to paper a process. I like the concept of the Building Utilization Committee with, as Ms. Phelps says, who are the stakeholders? Because that's going to be critical to having those who are impacted be the ones that are going to be part of that committee, to actually see and to be able to help to communicate to the public, the broader public, through forums, et cetera, you know, what's being contemplated? Because rumor mill will carry things helter-skelter, and there needs to be a way of communicating. There's another facet that I really like of this that is unique, and I want to say congratulations, Dr. Baker and staff, for bringing this forward. And that is working with already addressing, looking to the future, specialty programs at our schools. Because we, as a board, cannot go to the public and say, we need another facility, until we can demonstrate that we have truly utilized all the facility of the spaces that we have before we start to commission, you know, another building. And we're going to have to be proactive in this, and this is one way that we can be more proactive, because it takes almost four years from the time there is a concept, finding a site and going through that whole process. You know, it takes about four years, at least two to build, depending on the size, and a year to design it, and a year to plan for it, and a year to think about it. That's five. So we need to get ahead of the curve, and this is being proactive and putting down on paper a process that we can follow, and how we can best utilize all the available facilities that we have. Two things that I read through it twice, and two things came to my mind. One is defining when a building has reached capacity or when it's exceeding capacity. How is that going to be better defined? How do you define cap? Are you establish a cap at which then it becomes no longer to be transferred to, cannot accept transfers? And I think that's one piece of it. Also, an appeal process that I saw a couple lines, but I didn't see anything more delineated as to, and I don't think it should be part of the board, because it's an administrative matter. That's the regulation component of it, whereas the policy belongs to this board.
There is a provision for the appeal process with the transfer. It's not spelled out in detail, because some of those criteria may change in time. So we didn't want to get bogged down in the weeds at this point. We're more interested in establishing the process itself. In terms of capacity numbers, we have, there's a definition section that kind of explains some of that in greater detail. That too can be tweaked as well, depending on the needs, the specific timeframe that we're talking about. So there is some leeway in the provisions of the policy that will need to be fleshed out a little bit further. But we don't start at that point. We start out with the process and then go from there, I think.
I think the best way that I would describe this policy with its regulation is a work in progress.
Correct.
Because there's no way you can anticipate all the nuances of it, but it will be fleshed out. And staff may be coming back to this board a year from now and saying, this policy now needs to be tweaked for this and that reason.
Correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Uppaco.
I would also say with that, Dr. Meyer, because of the concept of specialty centers and transfers, we're trying to, as much as possible, marry or synchronize this regulation and policy better, because these are moving parts. So if through transfers or through specialty center enrollment or shifting enrollments, we begin a redistricting process based on who is zoned enrollment versus, as we have shown you, for example, at Massbonix High School, and we've looked at the block by block, and you see a much different figure than you just see in the enrollment, we have to be very cognizant of those parts in terms of the implementation. So I would agree, it is going to be a policy that's a work in progress, but then the how of implementing it, you know, will certainly be the responsibility of myself and the staff. But I think at this stage, we're going to want as much input and as much ownership of the board, because ultimately, when those decisions are made, they become the board decisions, and would want you to feel very comfortable with the process and the how of how we're going to navigate that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Uppaco. Onto fifteen point zero one, board member comments. Am I really the only one with a comment? That's very abnormal.
We usually go this way. Mrs. Phelps, you can start. Ladies first.
I just wanted to follow up with the honorable resolutions that we had, and I'd like everybody out there to know. I just want to thank the PTO and the PTAs and the parents and the staff, and there are members of our community who donate month over month to Spotsylvania County Public Schools. So I want to acknowledge them too, because I know that they work tirelessly to contribute to our schools. And I wanted to congratulate the Teachers of the Year that I met in the back. That was pretty nice to have conversations with them one-on-one. And I also wanted to let the public know that the school board has a school board policy, B H A R. And anyway, pretty much, I had the opportunity to visit various schools and school facilities. And I'd like to thank the principals, the vice principals, the staff, and there were students there that took us on a tour of the schools, so I could get a pulse on the different schools in our county. And it was a really nice tour, and I'm just looking forward to visiting more schools around the county, so I can get to know people and get a pulse on just the different layouts of the schools and see what each one has. That's it. And that's all I have to share. Thanks.
Mr. Twig.
And to further what Ms. Phelps just stated about the tour, she and I had the opportunity to take county board members, Dr. Trampy and Mr. Benton, to four of our dynamic schools, Massbonix High, Smith Station, Freedom Middle, and Post Oak Middle, and to give them a good flash card of where we are today. And they ended the day rather impressed, and as always, we're looking to them for funding this time of year, so I have high expectation that we did impress them. And I personally was totally impressed with everything at each one of these schools that we went to. So thank you for doing what you do every day. I know you didn't do anything special, but there are a lot of notable items that were impressive at each school throughout the day. So thank you all, all of you schools who helped us with that. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. Sorry. I attended and actually was one of the judges at the Future Chefs Competition, where we had fourth and fifth graders, they were the five finalists, from our elementary schools, and they made their own recipes, and then they prepared them. And they did this at the Career and Tech Center in our culinary arts facility. The theme was Asian fusion, and I can honestly say that of all five, I took the recipes, I have them with me, if anybody wants to see them after the meeting, were amazing, and I'm planning on making all five of them, because they were so good. So I just want to congratulate our culinary, fourth and fifth graders, who did such an awesome job. And then last month was Social Workers Month, and I saw Mr. Blaine and Mrs. Phelps is there as well. We attended a viewing of the movie Resilience, which was about the adverse childhood experiences and childhood trauma, to be able to kind of get an insight of what that is and how a simple relationship with an adult can help a student to be resilient against those adverse childhood experiences of childhood trauma. There were a panel of experts that talked about it with us as well after the presentation. It was advertised throughout the region. There were people from different school divisions there, not just Spotsylvania. So I want to thank our social workers for planning that. It was just wonderful. And then also, just congratulate all of our award winners. This night is always one of my favorites with the Teachers of the Year. They tirelessly work for our students, and if it wasn't for them, then we wouldn't have a school system, because our school teachers are, I mean, we've got our bus drivers who are, I like what she said, they're the first person the students see on their way to school and the last person they see when they're getting home. And that's huge. But then our teachers in the classroom, our kids are with, you think about, our kids are in school about seven hours a day. So they are with those people in the school that long, every single day, well, 180 days of the year. So what they do is so supportive and so important to our students, and I thank them tremendously, and I concur to all of them. Congratulations. Thank you.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank the SCA for brainstorming and coming up with the Anti-Bullying Summit, and it is a fantastic idea to host, to get all the stakeholders in one room. And I've signed my pledge, so I hope my fellow board members will do so as well, and I look forward to attending that this summer. Let's move on to item sixteen point zero one, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business to bring up? Sixteen point zero two, new business. Onto seventeen. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Braswell, second by Ms. Phelps. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.